If you'll please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. Reverend Nelson? Amen. Thank you. Mr. Mizzi, will he take the roll call, please?
Councilman Lloyd. Councilman Schleck has asked to be excused. Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Marcos has also asked to be excused. Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Pro Temnick.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any changes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting of July 9th?
Motion, Mayor.
I'm sorry. This is...
June 25th.
June...
Oh, I...
Twenty...
Yeah, I flip-flopped the agenda.
Okay, that's a...
June 25th.
June 25th? Thank you. That is a correction to the agenda. Motion to approve the minutes from the June 25th meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Any corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved. Now we come to organizational business and we will start out with Mr. Astheimer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update tonight. Everybody should have received their tax bills in the mail. Those were sent out July 1st and I believe most have received those by now. There were a couple of issues that we discovered through the BSNA software, a couple of things that came up that we've made a point to stop so this doesn't happen again, but there's folks that requested to be on ACH that received a bill. Normally, there's a little blurb on the left-hand side stating that that will be deducted from their account automatically. That wasn't on this bill. So if you've signed up for ACH, if you want to call just to double-check, we can answer those questions through my office or Finance. In 100% of the cases, it's been where they've had that ACH on file, but for peace of mind, if you wanted to call, we could double-check that for you. And then also, the tax bills got sent to every, almost all residents, so the ones that even had some... Had the mortgage company. We did upload the files to the mortgage companies, but some folks still did receive that tax bill. So that's for information only. You can send it to your mortgage company if you want, but that is... Those have all been sent to the mortgage company. And again, if folks want to call just to verify that, what I'm doing is just verifying the bank and the last four digits with them just so they have peace of mind knowing that that's been taken care of. Again, these two issues, it turns out was a software issue and we've resolved that, so that won't be happening going forward. But I just wanted residents to know this was brought to our attention and it's been resolved. Thank you.
Now we will move on to organizational business.
Good evening, Mayor Council, President of Allen Park. Just a few updates. Pinecrest Drive project, work continues on the outside curbs and the sub-base concrete patching. It'll be a little bit longer working on that project. Due to a delay in receiving the bridge beams, the starting date for the bridge project on Reef Road at the Sexton Kilfoyle... Sexton Kilfoyle Drain has been pushed back to the end of July. This is like the back and forth. This is... I think this might be it, though. I think, end of July. The M-39 service drive bridge project, which is between O'Connor and Euclid Avenue, is scheduled to start on July 15th. Concrete sectioning, Savone Cement will start working on Roslin Avenue and Sherborne Avenue next week. The reconstruction of Wick Road, this is going to be from Pelham Road to the railroad tracks and Herrick Street from Pelham Road also to the cul-de-sac is scheduled to start the second week of August now. The municipal facilities committees, fire station and library subcommittees continue to meet with the architects regarding their projects. And the MAC Police accreditation assessment went well. The department is now preparing for the actual assessment in August. Just also want to touch on, the magazine came in. I don't think this goes to the residents, but it's for the... Came here for the businesses and we opened it up and lo and behold, there in the middle of the... Is our own Kyle Carr. Sadie asked that I did not mention this because she didn't need his head getting any bigger than it already is, but it's an article just on the savings that the community center has reaped from the DT Energy Efficiency Programs in there. So everybody's been in the arena. It looks great. We can see the LED lights. We can see, you know, much brighter and easier to see and a lot of other improvements there. So, but there, yes, Kyle was right there, so just congratulations to him for that. And then just a real, real quick note. Last week, former Parks Director Pat Hawkins passed away. And I know Pat, even if you read his obituary, it's stated in there, he rubbed a lot of people differently. And he certainly did, but I do think that he did a lot of good things here in Allen Park that probably outweigh a couple of the bads. But just sad to see his passing at 73. Just too young, at 73 to pass. So we just wish his family the best in our condolences there, so that's everything I have.
May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius, second by Mr. Barr. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We now come to public comments. Time is restricted to four minutes. All we want to hear is your name and the street on which you live. We do not want your full address. And then we also ask that you please keep your comments civil. Please, please keep in mind that this is somebody's birthday and anniversary.
Good evening, City Council Mayor, Raye McGusson Quant. At this time, I would like to go ahead and introduce a document to Mike Mizzi. I do not have the ink or the paperwork to go ahead and print enough for you all to see. Also, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and ask for the time that I've needed in order to go through this document. It should not take a long time. This is a document that I just gave Mike. This is a document put out by the state of Michigan. This is an eye-opener. As you know, many times I come up here to try to go ahead and generate money for our city. There's a lot of money out there that I think we're just sitting on, that we really don't look at. Right now, in the state of Michigan, here's some facts. The state of Michigan put out $887 million, $87,93,279 to municipalities for marijuana dispensaries. There are 99 cities that are involved, 518 licenses, $30,606,729. There are 30 villages, 58 licenses, at $3,427,800. There are 69 townships with 161 licenses at $9,512. The figures I just gave you are from February 2024 and are definitely are wrong. Because during this time, a lot of cities have already been putting in dispensaries. I know we voted to have it. Somehow, our city went ahead and opted out. The city of Lincoln Park opted out. Okay? When they opted out, they said the same thing based on what our city did. Right now, at the going rate, every single dispensary in the city, in the state of Michigan receives... Every city does, receives for every dispensary that's in their city, receives $59,086. That's for every dispensary. If you really want to look into it and say, wow, the city of Lincoln Park opted back in a couple of years ago. Right now, the document says they have two. No, they don't. They have three, and I think a fourth one's going in. The city of Lincoln Park received $118,000. Monroe, which is really a shocker to a lot of you. The village of Mon... The township of Monroe has 16 dispensaries and they received $945,000. The county of Monroe, that has 18 dispensaries within it, received $163,000. This is not only far away, my friends. This is Lincoln Park. This is River Rouge. River Rouge has 40... Has eight dispensaries. They cost... They brought in $472,600.
Thank you, Ray. We've got the information and we appreciate it.
I'm going to ask for one more minute.
We're not going to do that again. We've got the information. It's accessible. I've seen it. It's well-published. There's a lot of side effects. I'm sure if you talked with our police chief, he would also have an opinion about marijuana establishments, so... We will make sure that all the council members get a copy and everyone will have the information.
One point, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion that we give Mr. McGusson the rest of his time, like we gave somebody last meeting. We'll give you another minute. So I'm going to make that motion.
Okay. At this...
There is no second. Is there a second?
No second. Sorry, but thank you for the information. We are, we are well aware of it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for my time.
Thank you. Charles Lemon Champagne. First off, I want to say, I know some of you went to the event, but I want to say that the... Cop on a corner at the library that they had, that was wonderful information. I hope they do more throughout the next few months, especially the warmer months and... But great job to the chief and the police department on that. Just a suggestion again to our police department to get some free money tickets. If they stay by Southfield and Roosevelt around 11:00 or midnight, you can get good tickets right there for people going through the red light or making that U-turn, just saying, because when I go to work, I see that a lot. Or go on May Street by the library and sit there and look at Champagne and Allen, because people go through that, those two lights. But just some, just some comments of observation. Also, personally, from what I just saw, from what in the past of history of council meetings, you know, we used to have where three minutes at the beginning, three minutes at the end. Maybe we... There should be a motion to have six minutes all together so that people can speak and then not have what I saw at the last meeting where had more time. Again, just an observation and maybe something to look forward to. I know some people want... Don't want to be here for two or three hours like how in the past we've had way back in the day and stuff, but... But just, you're here to listen to your residents that you represent that got you up here. Also, maybe at some point in the meeting, have also an update like you had at the work session about the garbage situation. Just so that the people who are not here know what's going on as well. Again, just communication. Like you said, there are links on the website for, if they don't pick up your trash, to go up there. Just, again, it's, just make sure we just keep on, have great communications, support your local businesses. I saw there was a ribbon cutting just recently where, right by Marshall Music, a new barber shop. So again, just keep supporting your local businesses. Again, thank you to the information from Mayor Pro Temnick of getting information from the DDA of why the benches were taken out of downtown. But I was informed that after those lights are going in, they're going to bring, put new ones in, same with the trashcans. Because my concern was the street fair is coming and I know usually it's a hot day and people need to sit and usually we have picnic tables and stuff, but just for, you know, to sit in our downtown to have benches and trashcans and all that stuff in Park Avenue. But again, you guys are residents as well. You guys are doing a good job. And just stay positive as always and keep up the good work. And again, just communicate with residents as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else is coming up. We'll close public comments, move on to the consent agenda, which this evening consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report under purchasing and finance actions, which would include the finance overview, budget-to-actual report, balance sheet and cash flow. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We now move on to resolutions. The first resolution is to approve the city of Allen Park signing the settlement documents related to the Kroger National Opioid Settlement. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Set.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. You'll have that explained to us?
If I may, through the chair. This is just a request to approve the 2024 National Opioid Settlement. This time, it's with Kroger. Previous time, it's been with Walgreens, Walmart, distributors, Jensen, TVA, a number of others. This is our fourth time for this request to go forth. And we just need to have approval before the August 12th deadline and then I'll go ahead and, if it's approved, I'll go ahead and paperwork all authorized and submitted and then we will get a certain amount of funding. It's based on a formula that's pretty complicated. We do have, to this point, I think we announced it was about $58,000 that we've received so far. The difficulty is trying to figure out what that can legally be used for and we're working on that to see if it's possible that we can use it for a couple of the programs with the police department and others.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution two is to approve the recommendation of the city administrator on the first right of refusal and that the city decline the offer to purchase the tax foreclosed property from Wayne County Treasurer. And that is a vacant lot on Belfort. Have a motion on, a motion on that, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
This is an annual request that comes through from the Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabri. So the city has the ability to acquire the tax foreclosed properties that are available. In this case, there's only one lot available. It is a lot on Belfort. It's at the end of Belfort off of Van Born in the 94... It'd be adjacent to 94. The heavy growth and all that stuff. You can see, I did try to put a picture in there for, give you a visual of where it's at. My recommendation would be to decline this offer as we're just not in the... Need to be in the business of owning a piece of property that we'll have to maintain. I don't know if this was previously owned by the neighbor next door. To me, that's where it seems like it should be appropriately with, but he may not have, or she may not have paid taxes on it. That's why it's in the foreclosure process now.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Sorry.
I said aye.
Oh, okay. All right, moving on to resolution three, to waive the city bid process as there is no economic advantage since we are using Michigan deal, the Macomb County bid price, and approve the police department purchase of two 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles, Explorers, from Longhammer Ford in the amount of $101,730. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
So I think it was two weeks ago, we requested to purchase two of the Explorers for the detective bureau. These two are actually patrol vehicles. There will be extra costs that goes into these. It's anywhere between $15,000 to $20,000 now to outfit a Explorer to this, for the police department. It's really crazy because a couple of years ago, we were buying these for $38,000 and it was 15, $12,000 to $15,000 to put them together. Basically, what you're paying for the vehicle now is what we were paying for the full outfit, you know, back before, before COVID. So I just request to purchase two of the vehicles and this, this keeps us in the rotation that we've been able to do for the last number of years. I've replaced two to three, sometimes up to four. And in the meantime, we're also trying to intermix the DB vehicles. That's where we have the two DB vehicles this year. We got a couple of few years back and forth. Just make sure our fleet is in good shape. If I recall, the DB vehicles that we bought were replaced in 2009, escapes from back in the day. These are just replaced. I think these are probably going to be replaced in 2017. I think 2017 is where they're replacing some.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Next resolution is to waive the city bid process as there is no economic advantage since we are using the Michigan State bid price and approve the DPS purchase of one Bandit model chipper from Bandit Industries in the amount of $47,530. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
Good evening. So this is for a chipper to go with another one of our trucks to replace a chipper that is about 23 years old. That chipper that's 23 years old still works, but we put more work into it to keep it running than we do, than it's worth. So we're asking if you guys would let us purchase a new one, hopefully get 23 more years out of that.
Just clarification as well.
Yes.
You're trading in?
Yes, we're trading one in. We're getting a $9,000 trade-in value for it, yes. That's why the price is 47. It's actually about 56.
I'm sorry, I need to ask for a motion. It came up before I got the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
We're on the chipper.
Yeah, we're on the chipper.
There was a motion.
There was a motion.
Yeah, there was a motion. Valerius.
I'm on the wrong one. I'm on that one. Thank you. Making my notes on the wrong one. Thank you. Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Any questions? And you're, and you're done. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution five, to waive the city bid process as there's no economic advantage since we're using Michigan deal and a bid price and approve the DPS purchase of one Benel Spartan leaf machine from Bell Equipment in the amount of $140,553.50. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Murray.
This is a leaf suction machine like we purchased three years ago that has done wonderful for our city. It helps the sweepers not break down by not using the sweepers for leaf time. Most cities are actually purchasing these now. These weren't around many years ago. We would like to get a second one that would make it faster picking up the leaves. We then wouldn't need to use the leafs or the sweepers until the very end when there's just a small amount of stuff, therefore hopefully not having to put as lot of money into the sweepers. This also is going to benefit us by, we feel, not having to purchase a new sweeper in three years that was in our capital plan. We took it out with the intent that this will make our sweepers last longer to not have to purchase another sweeper, which is much more expensive than one of these.
To the mayor?
Yes.
To be clear, people still cannot, like, rake their leaves into the street.
That's what I was going to say. Please don't, please don't this year, but we may see how this year goes with how these two work and we can have a serious discussion later amongst us all and see if that's something that's possible to do later. This is what I'm trying to work towards, but right now, please don't.
Yeah.
Let's see how this works. I feel we're headed in that direction, though, hopefully.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution six, to waive the city bid process as there's no economic advantage since we are using Rochester Hills and approve the DPS purchase of one Freightliner 10-8 SD chassis and equipment, a dump hydraulics in the amount of $220,596. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
This is a salt truck. This is the sixth salt truck out of six that we have in our fleet that will be the last one to be replaced, hopefully for many years. This will be replacing a 2008 salt truck that we have. 2007, I apologize. I was close. I don't have it up here with me. I do want to mention, though, so everyone hears, besides just this thing, the reason so many of these are up here today is this salt truck's going to take a year to get. That leaf machine might take us like three months to get. A lot of the stuff that I'm asking to purchase today will not be purchased today. We'll put in the order for. Just, I want to make that clear.
Just also for clarification, these are all budgeted?
Yes, every one of these are budgeted.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution seven, to waive the city bid process as there's no economic advantage since we are using Michigan deal, Macomb County contract, and approve the water department purchase of one Ford Explorer, active four-by-four from Longhammer Ford in the amount of $45,055. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius, second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Murray.
This is a Ford Explorer to replace the Escape that the public service director uses for meetings, everything that the public service director has got to do and go out on emergency jobs. We are upgrading from an Escape to an Explorer due to being able to handle more people in it and materials. We also looked at Edges. A Ford Edge is no longer available. Ford has discontinued the Edge, so we went to the Explorer. The Escape will be passed on to City Hall for services for possibly the treasurer and the clerk to be able to use so they have a city vehicle to use. That Escape is in very good condition. They currently have a 2007 Ford Explorer, I think is what you told me, that we, DPS and the motor pool has put a lot of money into just to keep it running. We feel this is the better way to go about have a newer vehicle at City Hall and a newer one at the water.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution eight is to waive the city bid process as there's no economic advantage Resolution eight is to waive the city bid process as there's no economic advantage, since using my deal, McComb County and approve the water department's purchase of two twenty twenty-four Ford F-two-fifty regular cab four by four with eight foot box from Longhammer Ford in the amount of ninety-five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Murray.
Yes. This is two two-fifties for the water department. Back in two thousand fifteen, we started the City Valley Park finally to have a capital plan for our equipment and an asset management plan. This is part of it. This is the first pickup trucks that will be replaced from the first ones we purchased back in two thousand fifteen. We have them on a nine-year schedule, so this is the ninth year. We'll be trading in those two thousand fifteens or possibly auctioning them. I will be upfront. This is more money than I did budget, Mr. Councilman Valerius. It was eighty thousand we budgeted. Last time I purchased a two-fifty, they were thirty-five thousand dollars. This is a stripped two-fifty now for forty-seven thousand dollars. So the trade-in or the auction, we know for a fact, we shall get the money back, so we will be under our budgeted item. I wanted to be upfront about that, that this is initially over budget. Have to up the budget the next ones for the next years.
Thank you.
To the chair, but you, but you, but you expect that once you sell the current ones, then that would?
It'll put us, it'll put us back under. Fair market value right now on the two, two thousand fifteens, because they have forty thousand or less miles on them, because we just stay in the city, are over ten to twelve thousand apiece, they're expecting. That is why when we started the asset management plan, I said to the council at that time, when we were purchasing these, that we wanted to get rid of them within reason. If we beat them to death, we get five hundred dollars for a truck. That doesn't help us buy a new truck. So if we get nine to ten years out of a truck, we then therefore can possibly get some money back to save money later. We were always notorious for beating trucks up to the point that they were rusted out and you got zero dollars pretty much for them and you were paying full price for what you were buying. This is to hopefully help offset that and continue in the future to keep doing that.
If I may through the chair, Councilman, you asked a question. These were budgeted. They, they are all budgeted. Obviously, we're at the beginning of the fiscal year.
You didn't count on a price increase of fifty thousand per vehicle.
Resents, uh, understanding, we are at the beginning of the fiscal year. That's why everything's come through here too. But I just want to point out that we do put this in the budget, the draft budget and in the budget letter, these vehicles are all online as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution nine is to waive the city bid process as there's no economic advantage, since we're using Sourcewell Bid Consortium and approve the water department's purchase of one twenty twenty-four Vector Sewer Truck through Jack DeHany Company in the amount of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
This is basically a sewer truck, like you see us taking, cleaning the sewers. Sometimes we also hydro excavate water mains breaks with them. We have one currently. We've always had one. We intended to add a second one. We're not going to replace the one we currently have. It's in great condition. With all the regulations coming down from the state and the EPA regarding sewers, lead services and many other things that were getting pushed upon us, we need another vehicle just to keep up with the regulations that's being put upon the city. So therefore, I'm asking if you guys would allow us to purchase a second one to get more work done more efficiently. And it is also correct, it's going to be financed. We're working with Huntington Bank. I'm currently working with them. They have the best rate. I asked the finance director and she said that they were better than our current bank. That's why we're talking with them. Um, it does fall, their four-year payment plan is what we're looking at, does fall within the budgeted capital plan of the four payments that we budgeted over the next four fiscal years. Just so you're aware, this, it worked out. It's one of the ones I wasn't sure, because money, as you say, is going up.
What's the lead time for?
Uh, I was, originally it was February, which shocked me because what happened is they had two chassis come in. Jack DeHany told me, do we want to put our name on one? We don't have to keep, if we decided today, you decided no, they have someone that'll buy it. So I said, sure, put our name on it. Well, now I'm told December for this one. This one's actually much quicker than a lot of the other ones. The two-fifties might take a year. The things you think will take longer are actually the opposite on this whole row of vehicles.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Mr. Murray, while we have you up here, perhaps you could give us a brief update, as was mentioned, about the garbage?
Priority Services?
Yes.
So, Priority Services bought GFL's residential services. The City Valley Park, just to make everyone aware, did not change contractors. This was something that was purchased that we then, they inherited the contract GFL had with us that the council approved that could happen. When they purchased it, they purchased all the vehicles GFL had and all the yards and equipment GFL had. They purchased ninety-seven, or I'm sorry, seventy-nine accounts in southeast Michigan. When they came in on the Monday to start, half the vehicles were not operable. They've been running seven days a week since they started. They've even worked on July fourth to try to take care of our community and I'm sure others, I can't speak for them. They are doing the best they can right now. They're trying to get the vehicles up. The biggest issue we're having, or they're having, is the vehicles. Their mechanics are working twelve-hour shifts, seven days a week, trying to get these vehicles up. GFL, knowing they were selling the business from the higher end, did not have anyone fix the vehicles as they broke down towards the end. That's why Allen Park and many other communities were having problems with GFL in the last several months. They are already aware they were doing this. No one else was. So therefore, Priority is working really hard to get that up and running. Just be patient with them, please. Um, if your recycle isn't picked up, in the trash industry, their first focus is trash. Recycle to them is not as important, even though it's important to all our residents. The recycle is the one that if it's going to be left, that should be left until they can come back and get it, just so people are aware. They will come back. We do have on our website their address and their email address. They do get those. They do create tickets. Again, even though you call it in or have contacted them, it's not a instant, they can send a truck out there because they're short trucks, but they will get there.
Any council members want to ask any further questions or comment? I think a number of you have, have indicated that you have seen people out and working and, and we know what they're struggling with, but I think we are, I'm answering. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Nick mentioned that she saw them.
On Sunday.
Thank you for that. Thank you. We will now move on to elected official comments. Try not to skip anybody today. Dennis. Which, which day am I on? Obviously. Not that one. Mr. Barr.
I'm first.
And you know, it's a good thing because you, you'd have missed next week.
Uh, well, first off, thank you to everybody that came up tonight. Thank you. I believe earlier there was a mention about the iconic image on Allen Road. I went to the ribbon cutting along with the mayor and Ms. Nick showed up after, but it was, it was there. She was there. I'll probably be getting a haircut there come November. Because I've got, I got a, yes. The trash company, the, the phone number that I have is eight-five-five-nine-two-seven-eight-three-six-five. They are and have been responsive. And I agree, they've been out on July fourth, Independence Day, so they, they're out there. Other than that, have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
I just want to take a quick second to emphasize something that Mr. Kibbe said to everybody that's here and people that are watching at home. This is the first meeting of the fiscal year. So a lot of times, and especially like this time of year, you know, I'll get some people stopping me angry in the street, like, oh, what are you guys doing? You spent, you know, two million dollars in about twenty-five minutes. But the, the reason that that is, is that our department heads, Amanda Wertz, Mark, all work very, very hard to build those budgets and to plan out what they're going to need for that next, next fiscal year. And then they work very, very hard to make sure that that fits into the, the grand scheme of things. So it's not just like we're being, this is not frivolous spreading. This is not just us, you know, handing the charge card and just saying, you know, get whatever. It just so happens that beginning the, beginning, beginning of the fiscal year is the time that a lot of these large purchases that we've been planning years for are going to be coming down the line. So I just want to make sure, emphasize that point that Mr. Kibbe made, everybody's watching at home. I, I want to, I do want to touch on real quickly on the, the motion that I initiated last council meeting to extend a citizen's times up at the podium. After five years of doing this, I'm still learning and that was a, a brand-new experience, somebody asking for that, something I've talked to some of my fellow council people on, about that. And I, I think that in hindsight, that that was a mistake, not just in that current situation, but one, we had no idea what he was going to say. Uh, and, and also it leads to the exact situation that we had today and I, and I apologize to Ray if us not granting that motion is, is upsetting to him. But it, it does open up the floodgates. And I, I appreciate, I have the utmost respect for Councilman Blevins and his comments about adding the, an extra minute at the beginning and then three minutes at the end. Um, and on a day like today, no problem. You know, it's, it makes your meeting eight minutes longer. It's not a big deal, or four minutes longer. Uh, I remember coming in the day after, the, the meeting after, um, uh, the, the massive flooding in Allen Park. I was not in council at that time. Sure, Mayor McLeod and Councilman Gavarecki remember it well. It was, uh, I was considering running for council at that time and it gave me, gave me pause because almost every seat in here was filled and almost every single person got up and spoke at that podium. So adding, on a meeting like today, not a big deal, but on a meeting like that, where you're trying to, you know, conduct the business of the city, it takes an hour meeting and it makes it a three and a half hour meeting. So I, I do think it's important that, that citizens have access to their public, their public officials. But I, I don't think that there's a single council person up here that doesn't stop and speak to residents after, after meetings. I have often been, you know, turned off the lights, been the last person out of here, talking to people that have concerns about things that are going on in the city. Um, I think that four minutes is, is adequate to address the needs that you have at what's on this agenda and maybe a larger issue they have in the city. And then if you have issues that take outside of that four minutes, I know that every single elected official up here is going to give you the time that you need to be able to express those concerns that you have. So I, I do apologize to, to Mr. McGusson. He has been our most, most faithful advocate as a, as a member in the, in the audience, not just in my time up here, but way, way before, for me. But I think that it does open us up to a slippery slope, so I wanted to allow some comment on that. But with that, I, oh, one more thing. A big happy birthday to Councilman Valerius. Uh, you know, I, I think we've all maybe taken our turns, had our birthday in council meetings, not how we want to spend it. So I wanted to extend his birthday meeting a little bit longer by saying happy birthday. I, I, I truly am proud to serve with him. He is a, not just a, a, a great council person and example to his, his students and our fellow citizens, but he's been a, a, a true friend. So happy birthday.
Thank you. Ms. Nick.
Okay, well, I was just gonna expound more on Charles Blevins. So they did, DDA did, they did buy new benches, new trash cans and new bicycle racks. And they did not throw the old ones away. They are being held in the DPS. I know that was a concern too with residents. So they haven't decided what they're going to do yet, but they, we still do have them. Also too, I saw that Music on the Street, which is tomorrow, is being canceled due to the weather. Is Ben still here? Okay. But I did see that out, that that has been canceled for anybody. And then two, I wanted to say happy birthday to Matt and also happy thirtieth anniversary. All right, well, congratulations. And then as far as the iconic image, they, I know they've been calling it a barber shop, but they're actually trying to make that more to in a salon for both male and female. They have, it's called Legacy down on Allen Road on the northern side. It's, so that is one owner and then what he did, he's been there five years. He just signed another five-year lease, so he's going to be with us another five years. Um, he hopes to be here longer, but he got another business partner and so they opened up the iconic image. So there's actually two. Um, and they're hoping to be like a salon. So if you get a chance, go in there, say hi. They're super nice, friendly, you know? They're excited about the street fair coming up, so, and that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
Just to kind of address also Mr. McGusson's comments, again, I feel the same way that I think everyone up here does in regards to listening to residents come up to the podium and talk. A couple of things that to expand upon though, the whole issue with dispensaries was on the ballot in twenty nineteen and it was, I mean, voted down by over ninety percent of the citizens. The city didn't opt out of not having dispensaries. The voters decided they did not want dispensaries in Allen Park, so I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm not gonna, I want to get out of here, so. I just, I, I wa, I wanted to wish my wife a happy thirtieth anniversary and with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Rastimer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a happy birthday and a happy anniversary to Matt and his lovely wife. With that, God bless and good night.
Mr. Mizzi.
Happy birthday, happy anniversary. Thank y'all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Thank you. Well, I've already told Matt on several different media, but happy birthday and happy anniversary and give my best to Holly. I know that Mark mentioned about Pat Hawkins passing and February third, nineteen fifty-one to July second, twenty twenty-four. He was with Allen Park, May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen to July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. We all have different relationships with people and people are multifaceted. You go through his obituary, which was quite lengthy, and you understand that he was a beloved son, father, grandfather and partner. He was raised by his mother, who was a single parent. Uh, he had a reputation as a hard worker and no surprise that his favorite song was Frank Sinatra's My Way. As I said, like everyone, Pat was a multifaceted individual. His approach to doing things might not have suited everyone, but to others, he was what was needed to get the job done. Since Pat's departure from Allen Park, I often thought about the things I would have liked to say under different circumstances. And at some point, I had planned on reaching out to Pat to let him know that he was appreciated. There is no denying that when Pat became the Parks and Recreation Director in two thousand fourteen, the community center and parks and recreation were at an all-time low. There was even talk of shutting down the community center, which had fallen on hard times while under private management during our emergency financial manager period. The center was deteriorating and barely used. It was not a place where anyone wanted to go and not just because of its overall poor physical condition. During his tenure as director, Pat managed to turn around the programs presented by the department and make major improvements to the community center and parks. The path on which he set the department is being followed and improved upon each and every year. Again, many knew Pat in different ways and in different roles. And as Councilman Barr pointed out some meetings ago, no one is perfect. Regardless of one's relationship with Pat, we cannot deny that the department facilities and programs would not be where they are today if it weren't for his passion, hard work and overwhelming desire to make things better and get things done. I am sorry he is not here to hear these words, but I will say them to all of those who loved and admired him. Thank you, Pat, for all you did for our community. We will be eternally grateful. We will be eternally grateful for the time you gave us and for the good you did. May you rest in peace. And may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. We are adjourned at six fifty-one.